Thank you for joining us. I will call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order for October 7th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. I'm going to take our agenda slightly out of order. Want to announce that this meeting is being broadcast and recorded. And I'm going to take, bring our attention to the licensing portion of our agenda, which is on page two.
I'm sorry, did we get an agenda?
It's just one-page document.
We'll have an agenda. Do you have it, Alva?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, here it is. Perfect.
I'm going to bring our attention to page two of the agenda. We're going to focus on the licensing section. We have a couple of licenses before us this evening. The first one is River, uh, for one-day entertainment license, Rivers Ben Kirk-Burj on 35 Dodge Street for use on Friday, June 27th, 2025, between the hours of 4:00 and 6:00 PM, within the confines of the deck. Wedding ceremony music via Bluetooth speaker, mic deficient bride and groom jazz trio amplified for cocktail hour. So what's different here, just to bring your attention to it, is that the Rivers Ben's deck is finally done. It had a building permit, it was constructed, it has an occupancy permit, and now the deck is attached to the back, right, I'm not sure if it's the back or the front of the restaurant, but it overlooks the river. So it has a roof on top and it's, has lovely views. So that's what's different, is we've been allowing, um, the wedding Noel, we've been allowing the lawn on occasion, and so this is slightly different. So just bring your attention to it and see if there's any discussion about that. Or honestly, the applicant is before us this evening, so if we have any questions, we can direct them to Lindsay.
I don't think it changes anything, really. I mean, it's outside still, for the most part, so it's...
I think it's just the location of where the music's being played. One corner versus another corner. And I, you know, you've got time, it's till June, but I just feel like if you're facing out towards the river, it's going to go further than if you have it, the river facing the group in the building. The noise doesn't move as, as far.
I'm happy to position it wherever need be. I'm just here tonight because she wants to be able to secure the trio if, if the license is approved.
Yeah, I don't, other than that, location, I think it's fine, and it's a lovely location.
Okay, so my only comment, Lindsay, is going to be just making sure that the sound of the music just doesn't leave the property, which I know is easier for me to say than to prove, but just make sure that it's staying as...
Do you, do you want me to put some sort of a recommended decibel level? I know it's, I know it's really hard. Everyone comes to me and it's like, well, we could, we could do a decibel level, and I'm like...
I think it's great in theory, and I think it's great for the state law, but if we really, you know, I've been at the end of Water Street, I've been at the end of Orchard, I've been on Spring, and it just depends on...
Wind and...
Wind and the river and the tide. It, it just, I think it's just a matter of being a respectful neighbor, trying to keep it to a, a volume that all of the wedding participants can hear...
Yes.
And that the neighborhood doesn't.
Okay.
The best we can.
What we'll do is, uh, this is the backside of the restaurant, we'll put it in the corner facing the restaurant.
Excellent, thank you. So I will entertain a motion to approve the one-day license for June 27th, 2025, as listed.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm going to abstain.
Um, the only thing is, is again, I always ask, is there a calendar that this goes on? Because come next May, and we...
Uh, we're going to do that after the website platform gets upgraded.
Perfect, thank you.
That's all you have before us, so have a fabulous evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Lindsay.
I'm going to finish the licenses since we're on this section. So the next one is Isabel Parlee, Essex Historical Society and Shipbuilding Museum, Shipyard Tent, 66 Main Street. Good evening, Ms. Parlee, how are you?
Hey, hi.
Um, Saturday, October 26th, 2024, between the hours of 4:00 PM and 8:00 PM. Celebration of life with amplified playlist through Bluetooth speaker. Any questions for Ms. Parlee? No. I will entertain a motion to approve this as listed.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, now...
I, I know that we do have a one-day alcohol as well, I'm going to get to that. I'm just going to take this in order for minutes, okay? Actually, the next item is Nathan Woodman for Centennial Grove, and I'm going to table that to our next meeting. So one day, one malt, we have Isabel Parlee, Essex Historical Society and Shipbuilding Museum, Shipyard Tent, 66 Main Street, Saturday, October 26th, 2024, between the hours of 4:00 PM and 8:00 PM. I will entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We don't have any questions, but you're welcome to...
Did I give you the money worth, I paid you, right? Did I give you any money? Am I supposed to give you money?
Yeah, when you were in the office, I think.
I did give you money.
You paid, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right, so we're good. We're all square?
You're square.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Have a wonderful evening.
So you're going to table the next one as well?
So, I'm going to, yes, I'm going to table the Nathan Woodman one, but just to give the board a little bit of clarity on why, because it's, there's no real problem, but in going through his application, as the board is aware, we had this discussion at our last meeting, Nate Woodman really wanted to use the new Folsom Pavilion, and it wasn't, it didn't have an occupancy permit, so we did receive word from the building inspector, he's going to give a temporary occupancy permit to allow for this one particular event. And I know that two weeks ago, after we had talked about this, Dan Mayer went to the building inspector and said, "What is it that we need to be in compliance?" And Bill gave him a list. I walked into the office moments after Dan to say, "What do they need to be in compliance?" So they need lighting, they need exit signs, they needed to block one end that had a difference in height so that no one would fall out the door, and, um, the group has been up there working diligently. All of the things that the building inspector needed to allow for this to happen have taken place. So I think the board's probably going to be, I know Alva and I have both been up there, we'll probably be very happy with allowing them to use it, it's a great event, it's a fundraiser. The issue is, um, just so that you know, there's a couple of little hiccups in the application process by way of who we need to have the town of Essex as named the additional insured. The times on the liability policy state from 3:00 to 8:00 PM, but actually, the application's from 1:00 to 10:00. So it's minor changes, but to make sure that the town is protected, we're going to send an email to Nate tomorrow, and tabling this to our next meeting still gives him plenty of time to get this approved.
So our next meeting's 10:21, is that correct?
10:21, that is correct.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to pass all these licenses around for signature, just give me one moment. Okay. Going back to the town administrator's report, Brendan, if you want to take the floor.
Yes, so the Affordable Housing Trust is getting ready to kick off the production of a housing production plan using the services of the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, MAPC. We had a kickoff meeting where Chairman Perrine was there. She also chairs the Affordable Housing Trust, as well as the town planner. And, um, MAPC personnel are actually going to be here tomorrow. I'm going to take them around the town so they can familiarize themselves with the different features of the town. And then on the 10th, the Affordable Housing Trust will meet and be able to interact with those personnel and understand how the process is going to be rolled out. And for people who don't understand exactly what a housing production plan is, I'm going to read a description. It will help the town understand local housing needs and demand, identify development constraints and opportunities, develop a, a vision for future housing, and demonstrate progress toward affordable, affordable housing production. And so I just wanted to give the board an opportunity, in case you had any questions or comments, this thing's going to kick off and go into, um, the process is going to start to unfold very soon.
Now, is this different from the MBTA?
Yes.
So it is different?
Yes, that had to do with towns that are either have MBTA transit service in them or are adjacent to a town that does. That was promoting the ability to have higher-density housing in the area of the transit. And Essex already complied with the 3A requirement, whereas a housing production plan is really the town's and the Affordable Housing Trust's plan for actually making steady progress toward affordable housing goals. And it can be flavored the way the town wants it, and in Essex, it might be smaller projects, like a three-family house gets purchased and turned, it's turned into deed-restricted affordable rental housing, something like that. Not sure we're going to see, you know, giant housing, uh, projects in Essex. And of course, I'll keep the board abreast of, of all the different public input sessions and surveys and anything else that the MAPC is going to be using along the way.
So if we don't develop a housing production plan, what happens?
You can do housing projects without it, but the Affordable Housing Trust, after talking to people in the industry, including developers who do affordable housing, determined without some sense of the demographic and an area of focus, it wouldn't, wouldn't be a fruitful...
Yeah.
...effort. Instead, get a plan that everyone really understands the facts, buys into it, and then steadily implement the plan.
Equally important to mention is that I've gone twice to the, no, I've gone three times to the Community Preservation Committee, looking for money to put into the trust's account so that we do have funds to do some sort of a purchase or renovation. And at my last attempt, they told me that until we have a housing production plan, they would not support funding, any more funding out of the community preservation.
But there's no requirement at the state level?
No.
There is not?
Yeah.
Nope.
So they don't hold back grants or anything like that if we don't?
Not, not yet, anyway, that I know of. Any other questions on that? Okay, um, we have now received word that the Essex River dredging project will commence. We are told this coming Friday, October 11th, we were able to have a meeting with the selected contractor that's going to be dredging the federal channel, with also representatives of the Army Corps of Engineers. We went over a variety of protocols, and the Army Corps went through requirements for the contractor, including public notice and, uh, and other things. We are told that the contractor will make their way into, toward Essex Harbor from Essex Bay or from Ipswich Bay. And as they go through, they're going to knock off a few high points so that equipment and boats can get through. But then they're really going to start the dredging effort in the harbor near the marinas, and that's because that material, which is the organic material, has the longest way to travel, all the way to the federal disposal site. And they want to do that while the weather is still good. If they did it the other way around and started with the sand, which only has to go off of Anisquam, then they would be doing the organic material during storms and probably worse weather during the winter. So it's ready to go, and, um, you should expect to see things begin out there very soon. I think I mentioned in my report, it's actually going to be pursued on a 24/7 basis because tides don't respect daylight hours, and they have to work the tides, and they, they could be working at any time of day, uh, seven days a week. They also have a limited window, so they don't want to give up any particular time. If it's, if it's a good time to dredge, they're going to be out there.
Brendan, two questions. When you say 24 hours a day, but they're primarily working at the high tide, so they won't be working...
Well, what they said is, they're going to get the, the scow in there, and they're going to start dredging. On, on a particular dredge cycle, they're going to dredge when the water is a little bit lower so that by the time the thing is full...
Yeah.
The water is up and they can go out. If they did it the other way around, they could be filling something as the water's going down...
Then lose it.
And then they can't, yeah, they've now filled something that they can't move. So it's that type of thing. I don't think it's going to be continuous because they can only really dredge while they have, uh, something to, to dump into, and those are going to be title-dependent.
But unless there's an issue, like if, if they need to work on equipment, they may be doing that during a low tide.
At any time, yeah.
Yeah. Um, the Ipswich Bay nearshore disposal site, it's an actual disposal site, not just a location where they can put the sand to have, hopefully have it wash up onto the Coffins Beach or...
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. I can get you the answer to that.
They call it a disposal site in this...
Yeah, and it's, it's definitely approved. I mean, you can't just go and...
That must be what it is.
Yeah, I mean, that's my understanding, but...
Yeah.
And, and that's the Corps that determined that, so...
Well, the Corps doesn't really determine the disposal sites. That's up to, if it's a federal site, it's up to the EPA. If it's a state site, it's up to probably DEP and, and, uh, DMF and things like that. So the Corps just says, okay, yes, if you're taking this to somewhere that someone else has approved, we have no problem with it.
They must have designated it as one when they were doing the Anisquam dredge.
Either the Anisquam or the Merrimack.
No, the Merrimack went all onto, uh, Plum Island and Salisbury Beach, yeah.
So the only thing that I just wanted to bring up, and, and, you know, the, the notifications went out great, that, you know, it's been on both our site, um, but none of it actually mentioned the fact that...
Noise and lights.
And the lights, and...
The one I did, I think, that it put on the town site says that. I added that to what they gave me.
Because I just felt like we need to make sure they understand, there will be a humming, there's going to be lights on.
Buckets might clank, yeah.
Yep, so I said that, because they sent me something that didn't have that in it, and I added it to ours.
Correct. Because they don't need, they just need to make it a notification that it's going to happen. We, we just want to make sure...
We put more in it, yeah.
Correct. We just want to make sure our locals, I mean, because I'm, as we were saying, depending on the weather and the atmosphere, we could, I could probably hear it on Martin Street or Apple Street or wherever. You never know.
Given that we have such a short window for dredging, it's literally a four-month window, and it happens every 30 years, I think it's important to mention that there's going to be lights on this dredge, and there's going to be noise, but it's something that...
I didn't take the time to look to see when the tides were for the next...
No, I agree. But it was something that, when I saw our meeting, I was like, we need to mention lights and noise tonight so that it's captured and people know that that is going to happen. So that when they're complaining, we can say, unfortunately, it's a four-month window, and it happens every 30 years. We just have to deal with it.
Got to do it.
Congratulations, we got the dredging.
And, and also the permitting, you know, because of, uh, you know, the environmental impact.
So now on to the annual, oh, sorry, Fall Town Meeting warrant. Article one will be that consideration of the authority of the police chief and which statute the town feels that they want to have in place. Articles two, three, and four are going to be the zoning articles, and separately, I've provided you with a draft of that and some of the logic behind it from the chairman of the planning board. There will be new definitions coming in on Article two, that's the proposal. There'll be proposed permitted uses that have to do with, uh, the new residential districts that are going to be brought up in Article four. I can tell you one thing, in one of the, um, proposed definitions, there is a accessory dwelling unit. They're just doing that now because they have a chance to put definitions in. But I've asked town council to comment on it because it doesn't talk about the town's ability to limit connections to the sewer system. And I think if we're going to bring in a definition, we need to have the whole thing fully worked out because there's already people asking about what you can do with an accessory dwelling unit because of the change in state law.
And I guess I wonder also, you know, does it have to be wooden concrete? Or, you know, like, does somebody consider a trailer pulled into their yard as an accessory dwelling?
I think, I think that is covered well under the change in state law, but in Essex, it's very clear that you have to actually attach a second unit to the house based on what the wastewater... Yes, because they've never allowed a, a separate structure to be erected and connected to the sewer, if it's a new structure on a property, without physically connecting it to the other house, making it a two-family. There is, there's never been a new freestanding structure attached to the sewer system. And that's because our sewer system was put in place as a pollution abatement measure, not as a, a tool for, for growth.
And, and, you know, and is it different for somebody who's on septic versus somebody who's on sewer?
Yes. So if you could meet zoning with, um, a separate structure and you had a qualifying Title V system to connect to, the wastewater piece drops out, and it comes back to, and we're still learning, what other things does the, um, state law allow the municipality to regulate? And in this draft definition that came from the state, it says, "Including but not limited to additional size restrictions on our occupancy requirements and restrictions or prohibitions on short-term rental of accessory dwelling units." So that's kind of vague, and it doesn't say anything about the town's specific wastewater prohibitions.
Yeah, and I just kind of thought as far as like 900 square feet, that's a pretty decent size. I'm pretty sure it's bigger than my level of the house, but that's a pretty good size.
Yeah, so we're going to have to learn more about what it means, but at this point, we want to make sure that people understand that there's another hurdle or bar to jump over in, in Essex because of our wa, our wastewater limitation and what we can flow to the city of Gloucester. We want to make sure that that gets handled properly from the beginning. Any other questions on, on what's proposed for zoning? I mean, we're waiting for town council review right now.
Okay, so that second version that we got in the email today, that's still pending council, I thought that was council's review.
So, so, no, no, so I sent you a copy of the proposal on Friday, and the chairman of the planning board packaged that up to send it to council, and that went out late last night. But both of those documents were the same.
No. The document that I picked up on Friday in our packet...
Yep.
I actually put them side by side to look...
I wonder if she made changes in it after?
She made additional changes. She did color them so you could see where the changes were.
Okay.
But I was like, okay, so these are different. I was assuming that we'd get them tonight, but if we don't, if we could get them for our next meeting to make sure that we have...
They're in our email. Brendan forwarded them just a little while ago.
No, she saw that, but you, you want a printed copy, is what you're saying?
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
But by the time we get to your next meeting...
Yeah.
It's going to change again, because town council's going to review.
Okay, that's fine.
It'll be all right.
You would, you were able to see clearly where the changes were made. I just want, I, I didn't bring my packet with me because I assumed we were going to get new ones.
So then Article five, I am told that I believe tomorrow night, the Conservation Commission is going to put together some form of a wetlands protection bylaw. I think Ruth Yu was saying that it was mostly to do with the ability to find and...
And I was copied in the email. It looks like it's actually been put together, and they'll just vote on it tomorrow. So it's really just a truly, not even a one-pager, it's a one paragraph, which is just fines and fees.
And that will go off to town council as well, okay? Article six is the new ambulance. Article seven is, um, this says, "A fully-equipped police cruiser." I am told that the Finance Committee is considering the need to purchase two.
That is correct.
Identical, I think they're going to go for two Dodge Durangos. Right, is that right?
I'm not sure about that.
We don't know that yet?
No, I...
Oh, what, they're going to replace the pickup truck?
They're going to replace the pickup in kind and the Durango in kind. I think, I mean, they're leaving that up to the chief, but there, there's still conversation about whether they want to pick up for a pickup and a Durango for a Durango, or possibly two Durangos so that they have two true line cars.
Like two vehicles?
Two vehicles, so there's a little bit of background that I'm going to bring Peter and Alva up to speed, but really fast version. So in the beginning of the year, annual town meeting, they were going to replace the pickup truck. We, because it was an expensive purchase, we asked them to wait till Fall Town Meeting when we knew what certified free cash looked like. So now that we're approaching Fall Town Meeting, they said, yes, we're still going to go forward. We're going to replace the pickup truck, but we would like a Tahoe. The price of the Tahoe has gone up quite a bit since the beginning of the year. So we were going back and forth, Finance Committee with the numbers and what they were going to do. In the meantime of replacing the pickup truck, the reason for that is it's a 2016, it only had about 74,000 miles on it, but it was eight years old, and it was having some body rot. Nothing mechanical at that point. Then within a couple of days, we found out that car two, which is the 2020 Durango, it has 95,000 miles approximately, it started having some issues. So that was sent to Ernie. Ernie suggested it go to Sudbay. Sudbay came back with an estimate of $7,000. So I had sent back an email saying, well, if this is going to have $7,000 in repairs, we may want to consider holding off on the pickup since that's not mechanical failure, it's strictly body rot, and let's replace car two. The chief brought it back to Ernie. Ernie said that he could do kind of a Band-Aid and keep it rolling. Then within a couple of days of that, car two was taken offline because it is, it's having major issues that can't be repaired. It's $7,000, it would be throwing good money after bad. But then in the meantime, so then the chief came back and said, no, you know what, forget it, forget the pickup, we're going to replace car two, and then the pickup truck started having problems. And now it's come to the attention that the engine of the pickup truck is actually, potentially, the, the motor itself is on its way out. So given the year, it's a 2016, and given, I mean, it only has 74,000 miles, but given the body rot, and given our free cash and that we were able to take several different big-ticket items off Fall Town Meeting warrant, it makes sense to replace two police vehicles at this point. That will leave us with the two 2021 Dodge Durangos, and they are still in good working order. So that's, that will be great. And then the only other issue is, and I know that they'll be discussing this internally, what type of vehicle they're going to go for. I did meet with Ernie yesterday, and he mentioned that the Dodge products are having issues because the oil doesn't get all the way to the top of the motor. So the Dodge Durangos in general, or Dodge products, are having motor problems, motor failures. I was reading about them online. So I don't know if they're looking at the Ford Interceptor or what they're looking at, but it's going to be either two small SUVs as line cars or an SUV and a pickup truck. So that's what they're looking at.
Does Dodge have the 100,000-mile...
No.
...train and engine? No.
That's a Chevy product, and honestly, I think that it would be in the Finance Committee's best interest to allow the police department to get extended warranties if they do go with a Dodge. If they go with the two Dodge products, they should get a five-year, 100,000-mile. I mean, honestly, what are those, $2,500, maybe $3,000, but it makes sense. So I'm hoping that that will be something that we work into this article so that we do have an extended warranty, so...
Yeah.
All right. Article eight is the new pickup truck with plow for the water department. That will come out of the water retained earnings.
Can I, I have a question on that, Brendan. When the, when we replaced the sewer truck, half and half from water and sewer, they are donating the sewer truck to the fire department without the plow. They said they were keeping it because the plow is in great shape.
Right, because it wasn't used that much.
Wasn't used. So why are we purchasing a plow for this truck? Why wouldn't the plow just go over to this truck?
I think Mike said when they get, they're saving it until they get the next combination truck. I got to look back in my notes, but, um...
I mean, doesn't it make more sense to use the plow that we have instead of purchasing a new one? And then when we get the next truck to buy the next plow then?
To put it on the truck they're trying to order now?
Right, because we, we will basically have a plow sitting there doing...
I can ask him about that again. Yeah, I think you would have a plow sitting there. I can ask him whether they would consider that.
I mean, generally, the plow, I mean, I think it's like a $10,000 option.
Or let the fire department...
Or let the fire department have it, right.
Until they, you know, need it, and then somebody else can buy a plow or whatever needs to happen.
All right, I'll get the answer to that. Uh, let's see. Okay, Fuel Depot, we're going to have, from an engineering firm, a proposal prior to the time you sign the warrant about what it will cost to design, properly design a fuel depot. It will be a, an effort that will involve one engineering firm coordinating the project, another engineering firm that's an expert on fuel depot design, and a third engineering firm that's an expert on our transfer station and what can and can't be done in that area. I, I think you probably want me to put an article in here, and if, if you decide at your next meeting, based on the cost of the design, you want it to come out, you could come back and sign a different version of the warrant the next day, or you could just leave it in there and table it at town meeting. But do you want, do you want an article put in there?
I think so, yeah.
I think so.
Okay.
We're going that route for fuel depot, so...
Uh, the next article, Article nine, is not going to be necessary because we now have a quote from another contractor who is only going to be fixing like 12 feet of ramp for, I just heard back from tonight, $1,600. So I think we should just pay for that out of town property, and if we run low at the end of the calendar year, we'll go back to the, or fiscal year, we'll go back to the Finance Committee.
Excellent. And this was discussed with the library group?
You know, librarian was right there when this other person showed up, and, um, the, the first contractor was quoting on replacing probably 40 feet because he was going to replace the entire first run of the ramp so you wouldn't see two different types of decking. But if safety's, you know, paramount, and we don't want to come up with the extra money right now... But if safety's, you know, paramount, and we don't want to come up with the extra money right now, it's not the end of the world. In fact, if you go, if you turn the corner on the ramp right now, there's already two types of decking on the second run, so we'll take that one off. Article 10 is the connection equipment for our virtual infrastructure. Article 11 is whether or not to add some money, which would come from water retained earnings, not from the general fund free cash. And the water retained earnings came in pretty healthy this time, about $400,000, almost $500,000. And so there's enough. If we just, if we look at the bid that comes in, which will be between now and town meeting, and to get a few more things done, they have to add in, you know, a couple hundred thousand, let's say. They have it, so we'll see. Article 12 is whether or not to add some money to the earmark for the Chabaco Lake study work. We, at this point, the board was considering $15,000 if Hamilton comes up with $15,000. And the same thing would be asked again next year.
Have we heard anything?
Haven't heard anything back definitive. I'll check with the town administrator. Article 13 would be funding the town special stabilization funds. There are about a dozen of them. We think right now, I heard that the finance committee is looking to fund, put more money into funds that have to do with vehicles because there's a lot of vehicle purchases on the horizon. And so we'll get a recommendation from them pretty soon. Article 14 would be, I don't know how much the wastewater department wants to put up for this because they only got about $56,000 in free cash, but some more money toward replacing additional grinder pumps. The finance committee's reserve fund would be replenished in Article 15. They helped pay for the mooring relocation, and then we would go from the dredging match fund and put that back in their reserve fund. Article 16, the OPEB for employee health, retiree health insurance. They're still looking at that, what kind of number they want to put into that this year. Article 17 would be if we find out that as of January 1st, the new law, Fair Labor Standards Act law change does go into effect and it sustains any legal challenges, we're going to have to choose whether you want to keep the shellfish constable as a salaried employee, which would mean it would have to increase to around $58,000, which is the new minimum, or just convert it to an hourly wage, which would keep the total annual, if he doesn't work any overtime, to about what there is now, $50,000 and change. And so what I've done here, and I have to check it out with labor council, is I think we should put in the wage and salary scale these if statements because then it gives you the option without having to go back to town meeting. You don't really want to vote on it to go to $58,000, and then there's a challenge to the FLSA law, and that minimum doesn't apply anymore, but now you've changed it. You want to have it flexible so you can go either way with it, I think.
So, how, how much overtime does he use in a typical year? And, you know, overtime's a higher rate, so how many hours?
It's not really documented. I mean, it's something where we're gonna have to, you know, sit down with him and talk about his usual habits and usual needs.
Yeah.
And make a decision, but.
I think that's gonna be very difficult. I mean, I've thought a lot about this. We need to see how it plays out. But I guess my question for you, when we received the comps, we had Brendan go out to many different communities and look at shellfish constables. And one of the things that kind of piqued my interest is that a lot of the communities, or several of the communities, had a merged shellfish constable harbor master. And our harbor master division is very seasonal, as we know. If we have a full-time shellfish constable anyway, and the harbor master division is so seasonal and so small, and we're gonna bump up a salary by about $8,000, I'm just wondering.
Because you're already paying benefits.
You're already paying benefits. He's getting a pension, he's getting health insurance. I wonder if you just merge it as one position. It gives us, for all intents and purposes, we end up with a full-time harbor master. So when we have harbor-related issues throughout the year, we're already paying somebody a salary. The only difference would be, he would be checking, you know, the river. But you would probably, and I don't know how this works, I'm just talking out loud and kind of discussing.
So is that based on what the, those that are in the place of those positions now? Or are you talking, like, I'm just trying to understand.
Well, we have a full-time employee that we're already paying benefits to, that sometimes during the year, he works a lot more than other times. And I think that you would find, he probably has enough additional time in his schedule to do what the harbor master does now.
Okay, but a harbor master, all, you know, Danny came in here a few weeks, a few weeks ago, whatever it was, month and a half, to show what he has to go through to be certified as a harbor master. Does our constable currently, right now, have that?
No.
So he would start from scratch to do these classes? That's the part that I'm trying to look at. I'm trying to understand, for me, no, I don't feel that we should change this because the state might change its laws. In May, if we see that, you know what, even in the wintertime, he had to do some overtime? That's a different story.
Yeah, and for me, I'm taking the people out of it. I'm not making it about a particular person. I'm thinking of it from the town perspective as a position. If we're gonna have a full-time position where we're paying benefits, wanna get the most bang for your buck. You could solve two problems with one employee, is all I'm saying. It's almost like regionalizing a position.
I disagree, I just don't think that November, fall town meeting is when you do something like that. When it's not like, neither one of them could fit into the other person's shoes. Hiring somebody new and saying, okay, this is what we're going after. We're going after somebody who can be a shellfish constable and be our harbor master. Well, then that's when you would go and make the change in my work. I think doing what BZ says is probably a solution that.
You have to have something for the change in federal law anyway. Otherwise, January's gonna come, and we're not gonna be prepared for it. Another thing you could look at when you're looking at hiring a police chief is the police chief could come with all those qualifications. There are people out there that have them and be the harbor master, which is what we used to have in the past with some of our other chiefs of police. So that's another way to look at it.
But do we need to have the police chief have any of those requirements? Or could we do what we did previously, which was that the chief didn't have the requirements, but his assistants did?
We'd have to look into that, and that's gonna be coming up right after fall town meeting because you're gonna be really considering what the chief should have and whether he or she needs to have those actual qualifications.
Okay.
But I'll start looking into that right away as to whether someone that's a subordinate could be, could have the qualifications.
So when do we have to be compliant?
For?
Wage and salary scale.
January 1st is when it changes. You cannot have a salaried employee making less than that $58,000 figure. If it, if it is sustained. This has been tried multiple times in the past, and it has been shot down legally.
Yeah.
So, so just help me get my grasp of this. So if somebody is making $50,000, $51,000 a year, and they're considered a salaried person, then if this law goes through and we have not changed that, they would become an hourly? Or, or no? Would we have to, you know, like, I'm trying to understand, why would we?
You can make them an hourly, but then they are subject to also overtime.
I just feel like, to me, this is set in a precedence. Why wouldn't everybody get an $8,000 increase? That's my concern.
Well, you have a choice. And what I want to do is set this up so that it gives you the choice either way come January. Because we don't know what's gonna happen. That's why I say if hourly, it's this, it's this range. If salaried, it will even allow you, if this, if this gets shot down, it will allow you to keep it right where it is because the FLSA minimum will not be higher than the maximum that you're offering. I'm just trying to work it out so that you have all the options.
Right.
And you're trying to do a vote on something before you even know how it's gonna turn out.
Correct, that's, that's my concern, and I also feel that, you know, it's kind of like when you hear these complaints about, oh, well, the so-and-so got a, you know, an X amount, $1,000 increase. Yeah, but these, these types of rules that come into play, and how do we know? So I.
What gives us the most flexibility, the hourly?
I, I want to get more information from the harbor master on just how much overtime he thinks. Because it's hard to answer it, I'm sorry, the shellfish constable, because it's hard to answer it without knowing the expectation.
And he probably doesn't know because he just does it.
Well, that's my concern, is that hypothetically speaking, I think he probably has weeks where he may only do 25 hours, but then he may have a week where he's doing 60 or 65 hours, and that's.
If he has two-thirds of the weeks he's doing 20 hours, and only, you know, one-third that he's doing more than that, then to me, what's the dollars and cents? We shouldn't make somebody a salaried employee just because it makes it easier from, we don't have to come. Beans.
No, I agree with you. My concern is they're still getting a pension and health insurance. So if you're gonna talk about a part-time employee, that's different. Like, what if this person only ever does 19 hours a week?
I don't think we can do that because I think.
I'm sure you can.
The MOU with the, with the Division of Marine Fisheries, I believe, says we have to employ a full-time shellfish constable.
Okay. That's not, and believe me, that was not the direction I was headed. I'm just playing devil's advocate.
Well, I'll get more information from the constable as to what his seasonal hours over 40 look like. And you can talk about it again. Because the actual change, if there's gonna be a change, is not gonna happen until January.
Right.
This just sets you up for the town meeting part of it to be behind you. Article 18 is changes in the town operating budgets. And right now, we have, the chief is going to be retiring. He's entitled to certain benefits upon retirement, so that's added in there. The.
And I'm sorry, is that written somewhere? I know I've heard, seen, heard that comment more than once.
It's in his employment contract. The electric, the cost of electricity is going up around late December. And so all the electric line items in the town budget need to be added to. The town clerk assistant line right now has a shortfall because of different staff turnover, and we have to have that in there. And then the shellfish constable deputy line item needs to be increased, more money needs to be put in because the shellfish constable has been out, and he's salaried, and so he gets paid. And the people covering the shifts have used up the money on a pace that was faster than normal. Article 19 would be unpaid bills from past fiscal years. It's probably less than $2,000, I think, at this time.
Brendan, can we go back to Article 11, just for one moment, for clarity, to help me wrap my head around it? Article 11 is talking about the, the public water supply, and it's about the harbor money. But my question for you is more about the certified free cash number. When water free cash certifies at almost a half a million dollars, is it logical to believe that we're, our, our water rates are too high? Or how is, how are we coming up with such a huge number?
It's, it's economy of scale, I think, because when they set the rates, they base it on a certain average water flow. But there's a certain amount of additional water that you can make, if you, if you will, that doesn't have a one-to-one correspondence with cost. And so if you make more water, you actually are going to be making more money, up to a certain point. Okay? Because it's not a dollar-for-dollar match, and I believe that's why. So for whatever reason, I believe there was probably more water used than was anticipated.
Okay.
And depending on how that was done, and you make thousands of gallons more without having to, without all the same fixed cost as what you had for your initial estimate, or costs, of course, for every gallon because of chemicals and such, but it works out in that way.
If you consistently see a number like this year after year, would it be something, would it be prudent to decrease water rates?
If it's, if you see that signal being consistent, but that's a very high number. I have not seen that year to year.
Okay.
What do you think happened?
I, I can get more information from the superintendent. I don't have the details, but I know it's possible to do better than your budget if the amount used does not trigger certain other fixed costs. It's just an incremental cost.
Yeah.
Yet the rate payer pays the full amount per gallon that has all the costs in it. So that's why it's a little bit different. But again, we don't see that number usually.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
What do we say?
Huge.
In the 100, 100-something.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
A third or less.
Yeah, so.
So can I just ask you, the email that we got where the certified free cash amounts?
Yes.
Educate me a bit, do we have to use it or move it? Or, you know, what, what can be done with this?
Free cash, no, it doesn't have to be used at all. If you didn't use any of it, the amount that you didn't touch come the end of the following fiscal year would just be available again, and it would be added to whatever that fiscal year brings. But we normally utilize that for things that are one-time expenses because it's one-time money, with the exception of like budget adjustments.
It helps us not have to borrow so that we're not paying interest long-term.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't one of those things we had to use in.
You do not have to. And then the intermunicipal agreement for the Eastern Essex Regional Public Health Coalition is not yet ready, so I'll bring it back to you at the next meeting.
Great. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the weekly warrant in the amount of $195,270.54.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the selectmen September 23rd, 2024, and October 2nd, 2024, open meetings.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to ratify the chairman's approval of the auto fleet schedule, the schedule of locations, and the special property coverage from Maya.
What?
So what this is, is every year we receive a, three different documents from Maya, which is our insurance company. And it comes in, and it shows our entire auto fleet, so all the vehicles that we have under ownership, all of our buildings, the locations, town hall, the water plant, it gives it a value. And then the third thing is assets, so plows, weed whackers, bulldozers, whatever we have. And that list is sent to the department heads. The department heads review what they have, and they either approve it, they check it off that they still own those things, or they alter it. So for instance, the fire department crossed out the '97 ladder truck, and they added the new 2024 truck. So then that gets signed and sent back to the insurance so that all, we have coverage on all of the vehicles or the increased values of town hall or the Folsom Pavilion.
Yep. So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to sign the election warrant for the November 5th, 2024, state election.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next item on the agenda is the request from Nathan Woodman to use Centennial Grove. That has been tabled to the October 21st meeting. Brendan, do we have any items that weren't anticipated?
I do not.
Okay.
Did we talk about the auction?
We can do that next. I just wanted to, while you guys were signing, I was doing nothing items.
What are we talking about next?
So we're gonna talk about the Allen auction?
Yeah.
So we have it under the reminders. So, we have it under the reminders.
Right.
You just wanna go over that?
Yeah, so we, well, I know for me, under number four, I have a one question about the, how this is laid out, because it's not my understanding, so I just wanna ask you a question, and I wanna make sure, I wanna make sure the entire board, if they have questions. So, the next regular Board of Selectmen's meeting will take place on Monday, October 21st, 2024, at 6:00 PM here, third floor of the Town Hall Auditorium at 30 Martin Street. And then, under also reminders, the Board of Selectmen will attend a public auction for the four properties previously owned by William Allen in the third-floor auditorium of the Essex Town Hall on Thursday, October 24th, 2024, starting at noon time, and the preregistration will start at 11:30 AM. Having said that, we received a document this evening, which is the auctioneer's posting with the terms and conditions for that auction, and I know it sounds like Alva might have a question, but I know that I had a question on number four. It reads, "The successful bidder shall sign a memorandum of sale and shall have 30 days to pay the balance due. Failure to close within 30 days will result in the loss of deposit, and any and all bids may be rejected if the, if it is deemed by the tax title custodian to be in the best interest of the town." The section I underline is, "The successful bidder will be required to pay real estate taxes." And then it goes on to say, "A deed recording fee of $155, and legal fees of $2,500 associated with the sale. A 10% buyer's premium will also be charged to the successful bidder." So, my question there is, the underlying portion, the successful bidder will be required to pay real estate taxes.
For this fiscal year.
Okay, I just wanted clarity on that, because we know that there is a lengthy history of back taxes that we were gonna, that we're gonna be-
That's right, but this fiscal year is still pending, so.
Okay.
So, is, is the deposit the, just the $10,000 in advance, or is it the $20,000, the $10,000 on the day after, as well as the advance?
It's 20, I think, when you add them together, yeah.
So, that's what they would lose if they, um, don't pay within 30 days?
Yes.
Yeah.
Alva, did you have questions? Because it seemed like you wanted to bring our, our focus on this.
Yeah, no, the only question I had, because number three says how it's going to, um, the qualified as a successful bidder, so how does the qualification get done? Does it get done on, you know, when they turn in their paperwork?
Right.
Because you just have to be here at 11:30 and put your-
And put your money down.
Right.
Right. So, you know, I think that's what it's talking about.
Okay, so it's just having a certified check that says-
Yeah, yeah, there's no other special conditions, but of course, if you come here and you don't put a deposit down, no, you will not be qualified to bid.
Yeah, I did know that there was a qualification that-
Like a pre-qualification process, like buying a house?
No.
No.
It's a public auction.
Okay. Before we move into executive session, I'm gonna offer public comment at this time, knowing that after executive session, we're only gonna be returning to open session to adjourn. So, there's no one in the room with us this evening, is there anybody online that has public comment? If so, please unmute yourself, state your name and address, and feel free to ask or make your comment. Okay, hearing no public comment online, I'm gonna ask Town Administrator Zubricky to bring us into executive session.
So, I'm going to, um, recommend that the board move into executive session pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation, where an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on litigating position of the public party. And I would recommend that declare, the chief declare that, uh, and there will be discussion of litigation strategy, and also that the chair declare that, um, the board will only be returning to regular session to adjourn the meeting, and that a, um, an open discussion, well, I guess I've said that, so that's all part of the motion.
So, I will entertain a motion to move to executive session by roll call vote.
Peter Piffen, aye.
Alvin Gaher, aye.
Ruth Perrine, aye. And Joan, if you could fade to black, and we will be returning to regular session for, to adjourn. Ready? All right, thank you, everybody, for waiting. It is now 7:25, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Joan, have a great evening.
Thank you.